We're going to go, I'll call this meeting to order. In terms of additions or deletions to the agenda, I'm just going to note that item 10.5 and 10.6 Municipal Joint Service Board, those two items will be, we kind of put them on the agenda a little prematurely, we're waiting for some information which we haven't received yet, so those will be moved to a future agenda. So just note that amendments, are there any other amendments to the agenda? Here you have the motion to approve the agenda as amended. Tanner, seconded by Councilor Thorburn, all those in favor? This is Carrie, thank you. Down to introduction of new staff, and we have our new Engineering Services Manager, Matthew Davidson here. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Feener to introduce and tell us all the great things that Matt's going to do in town of Bridgewater. No pressure.
I am pleased to introduce Matthew Davidson. Matt joined our team in November as the Engineering Service Manager responsible for Public Works Transit and Transit. Matt is a professional engineer with over seventeen years of municipal engineering experience working with two other municipal units. Matt enjoys living in Bridgewater with his family and spends a lot of his time at the rink either playing hockey or coaching.
Welcome, Matt. Thank you very much.
In all of that, you didn't mention that he is very tall. I don't know how that's, did you put that on your resume? I would put that on my resume.
Tall, dark, and handsome, yeah, I could do that.
That took a turn.
Sorry.
Well, welcome, Matt.
Thank you very much.
The clock is here for you, you have ten minutes to make your speech.
Wow, that would be very comfortable. No, thank you very much, I'm pleased to join the Bridgewater team since moving to South Shore. It's been always a goal to work for the town, so I did work for the municipality of Lunenburg and the municipality of Chester before, so it's very nice to work and live in the community and certainly hoping that I can work towards the continued success of Bridgewater.
Well, thank you and welcome again.
Thank you very much.
Down to announcements, members of council. Anything upcoming, Councilor Gergier?
Yes, Your Worship. I'd like to just inform the public of two talk events that we have this coming Thursday, and I'll just mention them both. The first one is talk Bridgewater Memorial Arena, and this informal drop-in session will take place this Thursday, January 30th, at the South Shore Centre from 10:00 AM to 4:00. It's located at the New Living Room, which is on the, sorry, at the northern, near Northern Reflections and the Source. So council will be doing different shifts there, so you can feel free to stop by and provide your feedback. So we'll be able to provide the preliminary concepts, renderings for the proposed renovation of the Bridgewater Memorial Arena, sorry. So later that day, also talking Bridgewater Memorial Arena will be located from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the Des Berzay Museum, that's also on the Thursday, January 30th. So you can come to hear a presentation of the former BMA and what the repurposing of the building will be, such as a transit park and public use facility. It's an opportunity for you to ask questions and provide your input. You can make written submissions if you wish, and we'll also be live streaming this on the town of Bridgewater's Facebook page if you're not able to join us. So that's from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the Des Berzay Museum.
Good, great, thank you. Other announcements from, do you want to count on you?
Probably the most important one, Your Worship, is on Thursday, February 13th, at the museum, we will be celebrating the town's birthday. I think it's the 121st birthday for town of Bridgewater. There's going to be some live music and cake, and this museum has just been newly renovated. We've done some changes down there to make it more open, more accessible, and gives the space that we need, so please come down and join us on February 13th, 6:30 to 8:30 PM. On the first, there's mark-making artist Tamera De Shuka will bring her month-long metrophoric installation and frigging artwork, it's a month-long series, and she just keeps building on it day by day, so drop in and see it again. And on February 8th, at 2:00 PM, again, poetry reading by Corey Levner. Corey will do a poetry reading followed by conversations and questions. Again, the birthday party on Thursday, the 13th, from 6:30 to 8:30. That's it for the next couple weeks.
Thank you. Tiffany O'Tanen?
Just congrats to our PVB, South Shore Lumberjacks team who qualified for the Chevrolet Good Deeds Cup, one of, I think, ten teams across Canada, so they're, they raise money for Veterans Recreational Therapy, and if they win, they get $100,000 donated to their charity of choice. So we encourage everybody to go to the Good Deeds Cup and watch their video, which counts as a vote, and we hope they win the money.
Wonderful.
What the charity will raise.
Awesome.
Anything else from this side of the room? Just a reminder, as we do every year, we have our volunteer recognition awards ceremony that will be in the spring, and so this is the opportunity from now until award nominations must be received by February 7th. So if you think of a volunteer in the community, or a group, or a family, or a corporate entity, you can either pick up the application form at Town Hall here, or on our website at bridgewater.ca. So like I said, these must be received by February 7th. The representative volunteer award is one individual that's chosen by committee to be recognized by the premier in the city on April 27th, and then we have, again, the family volunteer award and the corporate volunteer award. So go to the website, or you can email recreation@bridgewater.ca for more information. The other announcement came from last week, unfortunately, last Thursday with the passing of Stephen Sander, and those of you who remember Mr. Sander as the gentleman who donated over $200,000 towards the elementary school playground and $1 million to the minimally invasive surgical suite at our regional hospital here. And I think just as importantly, or more importantly, and just forgive me because I've been struggling with this all weekend, I don't know why, I met the man, I spent probably a total of eight hours with him, and the impact that he had is just, I'm struggling with his passing. And it's because that time I spent with him, and really his connection to this community, he only lived in Bridgewater for a couple of years, and he made his impact, really, on the West Coast, where he built a real estate empire. And that's not an exaggeration, he built a real estate empire. But Bridgewater, despite originally being from India, he considered Bridgewater to be his hometown, only living here two years. And it's because of the people of this town that had such a huge impact on his life that that's how he thinks. And for those of us who met him and we went to an event with him, he called himself a son of Bridgewater. The first building he built was called The Bridgewater, faces Lions Gate Bridge in downtown Vancouver, so not a small building. When we saw him in the fall of 2019, I was driving back from Lunenburg to Bridgewater with him, a drive that he had not taken in many, many, many decades. We were rounding the corner just before you get to where Centre School was, and of course it's not there, well, the courthouse isn't there, or the jail isn't there, and he said, wasn't there like a county jail here? Isn't there a school around the corner? That's how much this community meant to him, that he remembered almost every turn in every home that was on that route that he hadn't taken in four decades. And I take that drive every couple of weeks, I can't tell you what happens. And so while we thank Mr. Sander for his generosity of this community, he would thank us for our generosity, and I think that's something that we should not soon forget in this community, who we are in terms of people that we're so welcoming, because sometimes we're not. But also when you are welcoming, the impact you can have in that person as you pay it forward can turn into someone like Mr. Sander, who has given back literally millions and millions of dollars to communities across this country. So he will be missed, and our condolences are with his family at this time, but as I said, he will not soon be forgotten.
Okay. Good job. Councilor Thorburn?
I did read the other day about our South Shore Mustangs win the division for the first time in thirty-five years, I think that's quite an important milestone, we should be very proud.
Absolutely, yes. Lots of people in our community.
Win the division.
If there's no more announcements, we'll go down to delegations, and we have representatives here from Twin Bay's Coalition, so I would welcome you to the podium, if you don't mind introducing yourselves. As you walk down, you'll notice we have a clock here, don't take it personally, actually, if you can go to the podium, I think it's probably easier, yeah. Don't take the clock personally, it's not there for you as much as it is for me. We have a, we do have a ten-minute time limit for delegations, and I'm not very good at telling them when they get to ten minutes, so you'll be able to see your time, and this does not include council's questions, so if you could try to stick to the ten minutes, that would be great.
Mr. Mayor, may I tell a small story outside the ten minutes?
How small is a small story?
Tiny.
All right.
Tiny, I'm an architect, and in my other life I've done some work for this town, and this is my favorite story about Bridgewater, which I'll never forget. We had the police chief and the town manager in the same room, and the chief of police said, "Well, I think we ought to do it this way, because I have guns." And the town manager said, "Oh, yes, but I do the budget, and I know you can't afford ammunition."
All right, that was short, that was good. All right, floor yours.
All right, my name is Sid Damaric, and I'm known throughout Lunenburg County as Alex's dad, and I would like to introduce Alex's mom, Sandy, who's a valued member of the Twin Bay's Coalition, and I would like to introduce Jeff Lebutlier, who's a valued member of the Twin Bay's Coalition. Now, the Twin Bay's Coalition is a group of concerned citizens from St. Margaret's Bay, Mahone Bay, Liverpool Bay, and the mouth of the Lahe River. We are extremely concerned about the recent options given to Cirmac, a giant Norwegian company for open pen fish farms in those four bays. Can someone advance the next slide?
I think maybe we can.
Oh, do we do that? Excellent. We are not alone, this is not a NIMBY movement, we are surrounded all around Nova Scotia by groups fighting the same battle as we are. And they're all listed there, I'm not going to waste my ten minutes reading them, but I would point out that the Atlantic Salmon Federation is a strong believer in our cause, as is the Ecology Action Centre. Next slide, please. Thanks. We believe in aquaculture, we believe aquaculture is one of the ways to feed a very hungry world, but we believe in land-based aquaculture, and land-based aquaculture is practiced successfully right here in Nova Scotia, and I will come back to that later on in the presentation. Next slide. I have a picture of Mahone Bay, I don't have a picture of St. Margaret's or Lunenburg or the mouth of the Lahe River, but the story is going to be the same. You need twenty-five meters of depth for a salmon farm, the area outlined in red is the twenty-five meters in depth, and I want to point out some really scary areas which are open for Cirmac. At the bottom left, in the lee of Second Peninsula, snuggled in against Bachmann's Island, one of the gems of Mahone Bay, you could put a salmon net farm blocking the entrance to the Lunenburg Yacht Club. At the upper right-hand corner, you could put a salmon pen blocking the entrance to the East River, which has a multimillion-dollar elver fishery. In the middle is where the world-famous Chester Rigs Week happens. And Jeff will comment on this as we go along, but I want to emphasize that this is industrial farming on an industrial scale. A salmon farm just on the surface occupies about thirty acres of land. Those islands you see, there are about forty islands there, and they average about thirty acres of land, or of water surface used up, sorry. Thirty acres of water surface used up in our bay, and a hundred and seventy acres of bottom used up for anchors and cables and things. These are monster industrial units, they have a birch that automatically feeds the fish, they are lit up all night long, they make noise, and they smell, they aerate the water, they pump the water around. This is an industrial scale that you would not allow anywhere in Bridgewater except your industrial park, and I'm at a loss as to why they would allow it in our front yards on our beautiful pristine bays. So I'm going to turn it over to Jeff, who's going to talk in more particular about the disadvantages of open net pen salmon farms.
Yeah, um, the, thanks Sid, the, this is really, I was really moved by your account of Mr. Sander, it's like, it's amazing, and we're so opposed to this, like, we're really not welcoming, you know, as maybe, it's an abuse of the quality of life that we have here, and I think that's ultimately what brings us together. And the Twin Base Coalition, so we just started, just before Christmas, and trying to come up with a mission statement of what we're really all about. We're all citizens, all volunteers, and we're working hard to keep our waters clean, and we support, we really support the expansion of proven profitable exportable Nova Scotia aquacultural technology. We got universities turning out kids that are, that have, you know, masters and PhDs in marine biology, we have, you know, engineers who are working on this, and apply those skills to land-based technology. Encourage investment from our own people, our own pots of money into land-based closed containment. Don't invite people from Tokyo and Oslo to come in and pollute our bays with these noisy, stinky, smelly things. It just, if you want to see what they're like, go to Bayswater and check it out. There's six pens off Bayswater, they've been going for ten years, twelve years, they are polluting Bayswater Beach at night, well, anytime during the day, there's this grinding diesel motors aerating the water, trying to keep oxygen going in so the fish can survive, and if they don't have that, you end up with, you had in Newfoundland, two and a half million fish dying off, you read it in the paper, it's just extraordinary what we're bringing in. On the other hand, look at what's happening with our closed containment operations. We made a list, these are the things that come to us, this isn't necessarily our list, this is a list that comes to us emails. Yesterday, we had close to three hundred people in Mahone Bay at the centre, it was an amazing event, livestreamed, and so people are telling us, these are the things that they're hitting, there's all kinds of fish pens, open net pens, in, off Digby, and these are the things, the feces is absolutely extraordinary, the quantity of feces. Aquaculture, the magazine of record for the industry, says that each net, each fish farm produces sixty-five, the same amount of feces as a town of sixty-five thousand people. And in terms of the scale here, this is extraordinary. What Cirmac is applying for from the Nova Scotia Government is twenty farms. Each farm can consist of eight to fourteen net pens. Each pen is fifty meters across, half a football field, that's how big they are. Two hundred and eighty net pens in Nova Scotia, filled with fish, that's what we get. Industrial scale, it says sea lice, which are common, and their marketing that they're doing is absolutely amazing. We have, our MLA actually says, "Well, there's no sea lice here, speak to any fisherman, any lobster fisherman, and they'll tell you about the sea lice." So I, I'm going to turn this over to Sid now, because I see we're running out of time, and I am going on, but it is, this list, all of these slides are available on our website, twinbase.ca, and we're putting up material which substantiates our argument there, so there you go.
Thanks, Jeff. Can you go to the last slide? Maybe we'll stop here, there are jobs at risk, everybody's promoting the jobs that Cirmac will bring. We're going to lose more jobs than we gain. Next slide. Uh, next slide.
Oops, sorry.
I want to end on a positive note, Mayor and councilors, there are four Nova Scotia firms on that chart, and I have visited them all, and they blew me away. The bottom one, sustainable blue, growing land-based firm in Nova Scotia, selling every pound of salmon they can make at a slight premium, they have perfected how to filter fresh water and filter salt water, not an ounce of pollution leaves that site. At the top of the chart, Sustained Industries, right here in Lunenburg County, they have perfected a way to deconstruct garbage into its component parts and decompose, deconstruct plastic, the plastic that China won't take anymore, right here in Lunenburg County, they will reduce the Chester landfill by ninety percent, and the end product is diesel fuel and pellets which can be burned, but which can also be fed to fish. Oberland, the guy is a rocket science scientist from NASA, he is growing soldier flies to make protein to feed the world and to feed fish. And on the other side, Small Foods, they have invented a process to grow algae in the dark and create a protein which is an exact match of animal protein. Imagine the benefits to the world of that, can feed fish, but it can feed people. These are four industries that are right here in Nova Scotia, giving high-paid jobs. Nova Scotia technology, exportable and scalable, these guys are going to save the world. Cirmac is going to pollute the world, we're at a crossroads, are we going to pollute the world or save the world? Now, you might say, why can't we do both? Well, you can't, because these people are attracting brain power to Nova Scotia, because Nova Scotia is pristine and relatively unspoiled. If we pollute it, we're not going to attract these wonderful people, and we're not going to keep our own people, so we are literally at a crossroads, pollute the world or save the world. And I vote to save the world for Alex's kids, thank you.
Perfect timing, thank you for your presentation. Questions from members of council? I probably should have laid this out at the beginning, normally when we have a delegation, we receive the information and we don't make decisions the same night, we...
Certainly.
Because questions tend to come, you know, a few days from now, or in the middle of the night, or mid, and so it gives us an opportunity to filter those questions back, we might have questions for you in a week or two that we need answers to, and then of course, we like to, we would probably reach out, in this case, to the province to get some information from them. I know that there was a presentation made by the Executive Director of Aquaculture today, Bruce Hancock, to the mayors and wardens of the five municipalities that make up the region, and so of course, we all need to hear both sides and then try to make a decision with all the information that we have.
Certainly, and we would be delighted to come back in a couple of weeks and answer questions, and maybe suggest a motion that the council might consider.
Does councilors have questions? Councilor Graves?
Yeah, I guess I'm certainly sympathetic to the cause, it seems odd that the federal government would take salmon pens out of British Columbia but allow them here, do you have any, is there an explanation for that?
There's no explanation whatsoever, but it certainly explains why Cirmac is so anxious to be here, because they are one of the biggest producers on the West Coast.
We actually, I can answer that, I think, because we got the answer today, because we had the same question today.
Yeah.
So the answer is, that we received, was in the West Coast, the pens are, it's Atlantic salmon in the pens, Atlantic salmon is not native to Pacific, and ours are Atlantic salmon in Atlantic pens, so that was the rationale, although it doesn't really answer the other questions that you have, but that, because I, we all had the same question, why would you, what's the difference between the East Coast and the West Coast, and it was Atlantic salmon in the pens in the West Coast.
I wonder if I could address that just slightly, the, so on the West Coast, they've had a long and vocal opposition to net pens, from Alexander Morton and the David Suzuki Foundation and others, concentrating primarily on the endangerment of the native salmon stocks, largely from sea lice. On this coast, we have not defined, although we fought the battle, God knows, from 2009 to 2013, that resulted in the Doal Lahe Report, that we did not define the opposite side. What's endangered here is our tourism industry, huge. What's going, are you going to pay to come to Nova Scotia if there's net pens and machines off the coast? Can you play on the beaches when they're littered with debris and dead fish? So, so we haven't defined enough, the people that are opposed to net pens coming, we haven't defined it as well as they did on the West Coast. Here, what's endangered is the lobster industry, the tourism industry, and our native salmon stocks that have just disappeared with the advent of open net pens.
Councilor Thorburn?
The municipality of district of Lunenburg, the town of Bridgewater, are investing quite a bit of money to clean the river up, to make it so that you can swim into it, I'm just wondering what these pens will do in the areas where they're set up. Certainly somebody will have to market, but I wonder, can you swim in those waters if they bring those pens here? It sounds like from what you're saying, you wouldn't be allowed.
No, they destroy the bottom under those pens, they absolutely destroy it, and to figure, well, you guys would know this better than us, to figure sixty-five thousand people, that's six Bridwaters.
Yeah.
Pooping.
Why celebrate Stella Bowls and, you know, do that, and then at the same time turn around and license fish farms? Why would you do that? Why is it bad to put human waste in the river and not fish?
That's my question.
Well, that's a very good question, and there's no logical answer to it. Sid and I had a meeting with Cirmac last week, Sid?
Yep.
And there were these three wonderful kids, bright kids, highly trained kids, and we said, we said to them, "Why, why are you working for Cirmac? Why aren't you working for closed containment? Why aren't you helping us? Why are you trying to facilitate the export of our profits from our resources when we have at hand this incredible talent?" And they were three perfect examples of it, it doesn't make any sense.
Thank you. Councilor Thorburn?
It's kind of funny that I believe during dinner, one of Mr. Sanders's daughters told me that she either does or used to work for the David Suzuki Foundation, so it's a small world, but is that a resource that we could also reach out to and get some information? It would be very science-based, and there may be something online, but just in gathering information, I think that would be a really good source.
Yeah, I think wherever we need to gather the information from, to get the questions answered, and ensuring that we're obviously using fact-based information, then, yeah. So whether it's going back to this group here, or using some of the resources that you've listed in your presentation, which we have a copy of, the David Suzuki Foundation, Ecology Action Centre would have information as well. Councilor McGinnis?
Yes, you say that it's regulated federally, does the province have any standards?
The province has one hundred percent safe, for some reason, the feds cut a deal, and the feds are in charge on the West Coast, and the individual provinces are in charge on the East Coast, and that is one of our very serious problems, quite frankly.
Again, if I might just, it's a complicated issue, that's what people say, well, the West Coast, it's federal jurisdiction, and here it's provincial. In fact, the, there are many laws and regulations that are in the federal jurisdiction that apply to fish farms. Indeed, the province can license the fish farms in a particular location, but if they affect wild stocks, if they affect treaties that Canada has with foreign countries, if it affects navigable waters, and what used to be called the Navigable Waters Act, or if it comes under the Environment Act, there's a host of federal legislation which can be applied to the regulation of fish farms. So, so yes, there's simply a memorandum of understanding between the feds and the province for fish farms in Nova Scotia, and it's our argument that that MOU should be looked at very carefully, and we look forward to working with Bernadette Jordan and the new Aquaculture Act in order to carve out some of the joint responsibilities between the province and the feds. We're working with Ecojustice on that, so...
Have you had, been able to have a meeting with the Executive Director for Aquaculture? Just because it is the province that does the leasing of the...
Not since he left the Aquaculture Association of Nova Scotia, where he used to be, so we haven't, since he moved into the government department, but he just started before Christmas.
Right, no, 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 I was just curious, and I'm always curious to see if there's been an extension, like an invitation extended, and... like an invitation extended and not been responded to? Or if, like, if you're new, then of course, yeah, you're going to give yourself some time.
We look forward to seeing.
Cirmac does do land-based farming, correct?
I'm told, I think they do.
So, what, it must be a cost issue? It must be more expensive to build a facility on land?
It's a question of scale.
Yeah.
So the bigger, it's more labor, more cost-intensive at the front end to do land-based. But I can believe going to Sustainable Blue two weeks ago, how it has grown over the last six years, it's just amazing. And if you look, check out Atlantic Sapphire, that's six hundred million Norwegian US dollars from Norway going into building a land-based closed containment in Florida.
Right.
All the countries on earth are moving toward, except here, Nova Scotia. We're not. Why? Why are we doing this?
We actually asked the Cirmac reps, why wouldn't you do land-based here? Oh, they said you're too far from the markets. Well, we thought, we're not too far from the markets for the polluting kind of farming. Why are we too far from the markets for the good kind of farming? We were too polite to say anything.
Other questions from members of council? No?
We'll come back.
If we have questions, council will give their questions to staff, who will then kind of relay them to us, so we all get the same question and the same answer and we'll follow up.
Excellent. And if you would, if you would allow us, we'd like to come back in a couple of weeks and answer your questions.
We will reach out to you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much for allowing us to do this.
Phil, thanks for coming. Are there any other delegations from the public wish to address council? Hearing none, we'll go down the agenda of your minutes from the January thirteenth regular council meeting in front of you. Any aro missions? Hearing none. You will, being the ministers approved, and we'll go right down to reports and recommendations. And it is that year again, we are appointing a returning officer for the 2020 municipal election. It's an election year in October. What is the mission of council? councillor Tanner?
I move the town council for the town of Bridgewater, endorse the recommendation of the chief administrative officer and appoint Amanda Shuba as returning officer for the 2020 municipal and CSAP school board elections scheduled for October seventeenth, 2020.
Seconded by councillor McGuinness. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Our next item is Bridgewater Museum Commission citizen appointment. Someone prepared to make a motion? councillor Thorburn?
I would move that town council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the cultural heritage and events coordinator and appoint Mike Williams to the Bridgewater Museum Commission for a three-year period term effective immediately.
Thank you. Seconded by councillor Graves.
Sounds like great guy.
Yep. Any further discussion?
Question?
Questions being called, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Just a reminder that this Thursday evening is the public meeting about the Bridgewater Memorial Arena, and it is at the museum. And as was mentioned, it has been renovated. I'm excited to see the new, the new look of the space. Next item is RFP, 2019-16 wastewater treatment plant heat pump, heat study. Heat power study, sorry. Did you want to run us through that just very quickly, Mr. Fienner?
On December twenty-third, the town received one submission for the heat power study at the wastewater treatment plant for a price of eighty-seven thousand and nine dollars full HST, which exceeds the approved budget of fifteen thousand. The study was to include some administration preliminary detailed design and necessary approvals. Staff are recommending that council not award the RFP and that staff change the scope of work and reissue it excluding the energy generating component.
Why would we exclude the energy generating component? Isn't that a good thing?
It's primarily the cost. So the, the, the design component, and I'll say project admin component, is about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars on what we expected the fifteen thousand dollar budget would do. We are expecting that if we want to proceed with this type of infrastructure, we'd also have to increase the capital budget for next year, the replacement of the boilers, and currently in at two hundred and fifty thousand. And based on the differences that we've seen so far, we likely would have to add probably a half million or so to that budget.
And so have we done an ROI on that at all to see, you know, expense out? What comes in with recovery?
We would, we would do that as part of the study and the design to see the benefits versus the cost. We only generate surplus gas in the summertime. So we would not be, we would not have gas to make electricity all year round. It's only when we have surplus because we reuse the gas in the process anyhow.
So I believe the deputy mayor, you're wondering kind of what would be our cost savings?
Yeah.
Yeah. What would be our cost savings if we were to go to the energy generation component of it versus the capital that we would have to invest in it? Would we get our payback over a certain period of time or?
That would be part of the study. We'll determine what that would be. You know, it'd be dependent on the type of equipment and such. That would be determined through the preliminary and detailed design. And then they would look at the amount of surplus that we would have, that we wouldn't necessarily use in the process.
So we wouldn't be removing the analysis of the energy generation component?
This would be, this, we would...
Would include that?
We, we're suggesting not to go that route primarily because of the cost. We're looking at, you're in the million-dollar range.
So I'm now confused. Looking at some faces, I think there's more confusion. So if we, if the motion is, the way it's written, it sounds like we're not even looking at factoring in the cost recovery of doing, right? Like, how, at what point are we going to find out if doing a system that generates and captures the gas and generates electricity, when are we going to find out if that is going to actually create some savings? You know what I mean? Like, if we're excluding that right off the bat, then aren't we doing one study to then eventually do another study and then potentially find out that we should have done it the first way? Do you know what I mean? Like, if the most effective way is to do it with the energy generation piece, shouldn't we do that first?
We could discuss with the proponents, potentially what the cost could be to do, I guess, an analysis, if it can be done, upfront versus the full, you know, the full design of such equipment. We could explore that option if council wishes to do that. I would anticipate it would be more probably than the budget, the approved budget right now.
councillor McDonald?
So I'm probably oversimplifying this. But if I'm buying a heat pump or something that's intended to save me money over time and add some efficiencies, typically they can give me some indication of, on average, people save this much. Is that some, a question that can be asked in a case like this? Like, on average, what could we expect to save? We know what the investment might be to give us a bit of a ballpark? Because I understand you don't know until you've done the study. But if we've got some ballparks, then we know whether we're gung-ho to invest in exploring that route or if we just, it's not worth it at this point.
This, this technology, this equipment would not be comparable to everyday heat pumps because there's a lot of them out here.
Right.
There's not a lot of these that would be in the system. We can certainly ask those questions. We've utilized our onsite energy person throughout the process who's been providing, you know, professional opinions
Right.
on this as well. So we've involved our resources, our energy resources throughout this process.
Okay. Then kind of as feedback, I'd be interested in asking the questions and potentially increasing the budget if it's worth exploring further?
Yep. I think, I think that's, I think we'd be foolish not to do that to see if we can realize some savings. So I think that's going to be the recommendation, is to not award this.
Yeah. And then perhaps what we could do, Larry, is have that analysis completed before we move to any design phase? And that way, if the analysis came back and indicated that even though the capital may be half a million dollars more, that it made sense to do that from, you know, that the numbers work, that we would get our payback within an acceptable period of time, it made sense for us, we may actually want to proceed with, with that option. And if it doesn't, then we'll proceed with the conventional-type boiler system that's being suggested? Does that sound like an acceptable approach?
And if the analysis exceeds the budget, you'd like us to bring this back? Just the analysis component?
We can...
Or is there...
I would say we have fifteen thousand dollars in the budget. And if, if it exceeds that, we'll report back to council and say, how much do you want to spend to find this out?
Great.
councillor Fisher?
I'm assuming there's no concern with the time to do the analysis with any urgency for the project itself? So we have...
It, it was, in 2017, there was an issue with this equipment and parts were not available because the supplier basically closed their doors, which is why we initially went out in 2017 looking to replace this equipment. But since then, after it went out to tender and prices came back, there, there was another supplier that we were able to source parts through. So we were able to repair it versus replace it at that time.
So is there any way to wrap this into the smart cities funding? Like, you just, no, you can't?
I don't believe so, that smart cities had certain goals. Yeah, that were more at the homeowner level.
No, where you're going is the right direction, I think, in terms of smart technologies or, I mean, we used to have a system that captured the methane or the gas, right? Like, I think we were way ahead of our time when it first came out. Were we not? And we kind of have to go back to where we were, in a sense.
Well, we would still be capturing the methane with redoing or replacing the boiler without the energy component, the energy generating component. We're still capturing the methane, reusing it in the process, saving us on oil. That's the, currently, that's the other fuel source. So we utilize all the methane that we produce now and then it's supplemented with oil. And in the summertime, we do generate some additional methane that doesn't get used in the process.
Well, I need, to me, anything we can do to make it as energy efficient as possible is good. And I'd hate for you to go down the road and do work and then have to redo the work. So does everyone understand what we're...
I do. That last statement concerns me. You say that you use the methane now to replace oil?
Yes, we've always reused the methane.
So if we use the methane to generate electricity, we don't save what? We use electricity?
I assume that only the surplus methane that we would not use only in the summertime would be available to generate electricity.
Would that be enough?
That was what the study would look at.
That's what we need to find out. Questions still? Just one, this is very interesting. So as a growing town, I assume our methane levels increase and rise naturally, so to speak?
It's managed.
But...
It's regular.
It can, the more you put...
We're doing a lot of, a lot more work on our wastewater system. We have plans to and so on. Does that mean that we'll be funneling more product to the site and therefore generating more methane, I guess? Is that like logic?
I think it'd be very gradual, our, our, yeah.
There's a Joe McBrandt there somewhere.
It was fun to watch.
So, so the motion, as I'm kind of hearing it from council, would be the same as the beginning of this, not to award the tender due to the bid only exceeding the budget amount. Further, that staff revise and reissue the RFP as a...
An analysis?
As a... To do an analysis on the...
I believe we're going to reach out to the only proponent to see what they could provide us for the study.
So it wouldn't be an...
On the energy generation.
We would complete that analysis within the budget. And if not, we'd come back to council.
So how do you want this?
So it would essentially be that, that we not award the tender and that staff be directed to have an analysis completed on the options for the boiler that would look at both conventional and energy generation.
Someone prepared to move that? councillor Thorburn, seconded by councillor McDonald. Did you get that? I know you won't. Any further discussion?
Question?
Questions being called, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. Got it?
Got it.
All right. Next item is traffic light conflict monitoring testing equipment. And I'm going to let you explain what that means so the public understand what conflict, I know what it means, but...
I know.
Well, it's, yeah. Mr. Fienner, do you want to explain how that works? Just so there's no confusion here, traffic lights, I don't want people to...
So each, each year, we would bring somebody in to test the functionality of all of our traffic lights to ensure that they are working properly, that they're, the programming is not in conflict with each other that potentially could create accidents. And this company would provide us with a report that says that each of those intersections are functioning properly. So this is the equipment that allows that test to happen. The service is no longer available from this individual. There's only one that we were aware of. So this is actually the equipment to allow us to do the same service. And we were paying, it would be about a five-year payback, roughly.
councillor Thorburn?
So what were we paying, Larry?
Around three thousand or so, yeah.
And so it was sixteen thousand dollars, seventeen years.
Deputy Mayor? So is this equipment monitoring the lights within a set intersection? Or does it compare against X intersection and another intersection? Just the one?
No, it's just the individual. It's testing each of the components of that one intersection to make sure they're not in conflict with each other.
So you don't have two green lights in two different directions? So if you have an accident, someone doesn't say, my light was green. Well, no, my light was green. But isn't, isn't that just software that manages the lights?
Not, well, no, not these, not our lights. We actually have to have the equipment that connects to the computers. They're, they're individual computers.
Were you looking at a company at one point in regards to traffic lights web-based and... Was there a company, you had some information from an FCM, Com, Com, was it two years ago?
Not that I'm aware of. When you say web-based, you're...
Yeah, there are sensors that were put on all the lights that would monitor the lights and do traffic counts and...
Yeah, I mean, there, there is a variety of different technologies, including probably something that you're referring to. If there's issues, if we had the technology, we could get emails or... You know, there's all kinds of different systems that could be set up. We don't have that technology with the equipment that we use, so...
Is it worth looking into, like...
It, it's a matter of the level of service that we're, you know, providing to the public. There's lots of options that are, you know, that's available. It's just a matter of what level of service we feel is adequate for our users.
Further to what councillor Graves is saying, as we replace intersections and we upgrade those intersections, do we replace the controls for the traffic lights?
Yes.
So if we do, does it make sense to replace it with something that gives you that capability as we go along? And if we are doing that, does it still make sense to buy this equipment? Because the payback's five years and it's going to take longer than five years to replace all these lights or...
It, it may depend on whether you're doing, like, if it's one intersection at a time, you still have to address the other. If you were to upgrade all... you still have to address the other. If you were to upgrade all of them at the same time, you know, perhaps it may make sense to change the technology, but I'm not sure if council would have the appetite. For us to redo a set of lights, we're about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars to change over a set of lights with the technology that we're using now.
Okay. Counselor McDonald.
By a set of lights, do you mean a set of lights or an intersection?
An intersection.
Okay.
Counselor Graves.
The company's Mile Vision.
Yeah.
Are you familiar with them?
Yeah, we have some products from them.
I'll send that along again. Okay, sorry, thanks.
It sounds like we, we either do this and we do it in-house or we're going to still contract this company that's going to-
This company's not available any longer. That's why we are looking-
There's no other replacement for that. Really, we don't have a choice, is what you're saying.
Well, the choice would be not to test, not buy and not test.
Which isn't a good place to be.
I don't like where that leaves us now. Any other questions?
And this is done once a year.
If we had our own, we would, could do it-
More frequent?
More frequent.
Counselor Thurman.
No, we, we have to do it. We have no choice. I agree with Counselor Graves. If there's modern technology out there, the next set of lights we buy, it should be bought with the newest technology so we can use it on a go-forward basis. And if it's five or six years by the time it gets placed, at least then we can link the ones together that we purchased in the next few years and use a new technology, do our traffic counts and, and studies that.
So if I can make a suggestion, when the next set of lights is upgraded, if you could, when we get the pricing back, if you could maybe give us a breakdown of, this is what it is to do it as we normally do it today. And this is what it would be to upgrade to the, to the newer technology. And then council at the time can make that decision. If it's five thousand dollars, maybe we do it. If it's twenty thousand dollars, it wouldn't make sense to do it. But that way, we, we will make that decision and we have to live with the decision. Does that make sense?
If this contractor no longer exists, is there opportunity to share this equipment? Rent it out?
It could be if other municipal units were interested. HRM, of course, has their own division and their own people to do it and their own equipment. TIR has their own stuff. As far as other municipal units, I don't think there's any that's near us that are doing it.
Yeah, okay.
It could be an option.
Counselor Thurman.
I don't think there's anything close by that has traffic lights.
It'd just be TIR.
TIR.
Just-
Valley? Somewhere in the valley? Stretching now, aren't I?
What is the will of council?
Someone prepared to make a motion? Counselor McDonald?
I've moved that town council for the town of Bridgewater approved the purchase of the conflict monitor tester from Electromega Limited as presented in document twenty dash zero two-two for twenty thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents, including HST, eighteen thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars and five cents net HST.
Seconded by Counselor Frazier. Further discussion?
Question.
Questions being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. I feel like I should have had a conflict monitor tester for my teenage boys. Our next item is proposed changes to policy fifty-one inserts in billing. So if you recall, the last meeting, we gave notice that we were going to make some changes to this policy that came about in the fact that sometimes we are asked to put some inserts into tax bills that don't really fit in the machine. And from time to time, is required the manual folding and stuffing of thirty-six hundred tax bills with hours of staff time. So this is to hopefully avoid that so that they can go in the machine smoothly.
Counselor Frazier, yes, please.
The town council for the town of Bridgewater approved the revised inserts and billings policy as presented in document twenty dash zero zero nine as policy fifty-one for the town effective immediately.
Seconded by Counselor McDonald. Discussion. Questions being reported. Questions being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Our next item is the Central Nova ATV club request. And that was for access, ATV off-road, off-highway vehicle access to Centennial Trail coming across the old rail bridge long behind the LCLC up to Victoria Road just past High Street. Council received a number of pieces of correspondence from citizens in the town. I would say, can't say most were opposed because I think all but one were opposed. I don't know if council also had conversations with people outside of that. What is the wish of council? Do you have any discussion? Yeah, Deputy Mayor Dan, we can put a motion on the floor.
Sure.
I move that town council for the town of Bridgewater deny the request from Central Nova ATV club as contained in document nineteen dash zero three-two for off-highway vehicles to access portions of Centennial Trail that connects Cookville and Havville.
Seconded by Counselor McDonald. I will add that the ATV association felt that, they thought that there was still information that they would like to provide to council. But if you recall, this is ongoing since last May, I believe. And I believe council had most of their questions, if not all their questions answered. So I don't know if council's still waiting for other information. I know for me, I wasn't waiting on any more information.
Counselor McGuinness.
I only received two, probably the rest of council saying, from the same people, two individuals who are in favor of this and they both reside outside of town. I've had several in-town residents who put their bids set against any motorized vehicle being on that trail.
I need to share with you, I walk that trail regularly every weekend. There definitely are off-highway vehicles on that trail currently. It makes it incredibly hard to walk on, particularly because of the ruts in the snow right now. There's, it's formed nice ice surface. And so once you get past the bridge and onto the section that they sort of don't go on, it's a much cleaner trail to walk on and so on. And the vehicles that are using it currently are tearing up that trail quite considerably actually. So hopefully we can put an end to that shortly.
Counselor McDonald.
I did hear from a few people who are in, who are in favor of allowing access, but residents spoke pretty clearly and in large numbers mostly against access. I feel very strongly that our, our infrastructure isn't designed for this type of use, that there would be significant budget that would have to be put into it, not only for the surface itself, but I think within town, we have certain expectations for safety and policing. And that's a consideration that would have to be added when you add motorized vehicles to, to the trail. And we're not currently prepared for that, recognizing that, that I, I feel that there would be a significant impact to the budget to, to add some of those services and that, that proper maintenance and care. I, I would need to see that there was a, a significant benefit to residents, that there was something coming back to the community from this investment. And I'm not seeing that clearly. So with, with all those things in, in mind, I, I just, I can't see opening the trails to, to ATV use.
Counselor Frazier.
So I, I sit on the Bridgewater Active Transportation Committee and just looking from their lens, and we're all about protecting and enhancing our green spaces and the trail being one of them. So, and this came up in discussion at our, at our recent committee, but environmental concerns with, with the noise, pollution and erosion of the trail through, through the wear and tear. I've talked to a number of people that use the trail. Common concern was heard regarding the safety for all users, ensuring, ensuring that everybody's safety is there. We have many trail users groups from daycares to students, dog walkers, seniors, cyclists, just to name a few. Like Counselor McDonald, I don't see the direct economic spinoff that we would receive because the ATV users would be passing through Bridgewater. They wouldn't be stopping. So they would be continuing on. This, this isn't their destination. And another major concern is the crossing of the main streets and intersections here in the town of Bridgewater. So I won't be supporting the motion. Or I'll be supporting the motion. Sorry, I'm not in favor of ATVs.
Counselor Graves, then Counselor Thurman.
Yeah, I also think that the ATVs on the Centennial Trail have a negative impact on health, safety and wellness of residents and, and visitors to town of Bridgewater. So I would also support you as well.
Counselor Thurman.
I think I had a couple of town residents, I believe I could check my emails, that was in support of them and certainly a couple from outside. I'm really concerned about, and having been on the trail like Andrew, they're using it now. And I think I suggested when we talked about this before of getting some cameras up there so we can kind of get an idea on how much it's being used and who's it being used by. I don't think the trail cameras are that expensive. I certainly, it's overwhelming that our residents don't want that. And I don't think that I, as a counselor, can go against my residents' wishes. I won't be, I will be supporting the motion.
And, and I'll just echo what everyone else has said. I do, I recall one letter received, received from someone in town in support, but like I said, all the other letters, all the other correspondence from our residents were against allowing off-highway vehicles in Bridgewater. Couple of comments about, this would just be a burden to the residents of the town. We did hear in the presentation that while allowing off-highway use of our trails would open up some grants potentially from the province, it would still be that our staff would be required to do the maintenance and do the repair and the upkeep. Hearing that their primary usage is in the spring and fall, because in the summer, as we heard in the presentation, it's too hot and too dusty. Well, we know with the weather in the spring and the fall, that is when you're doing the damage on the soft trail. Of course, we have daycares that use that trail and the risk of ATVs going through while there's kids on the trail. We're, we're a town. We're a busy town. And I don't know how you put that densely populated area with that trail running through it and have vehicles potentially going through it when there's children on the trail. And I know people are using it. I also know that it's been an excuse for allowing off-highway vehicles on the trails. Well, they're using it now, so you should just allow it. Well, that's, that doesn't make any sense. Because it's illegal now and they're using it, you don't see an illegal behavior over and over again in this, decide that we should just make it all right. We still have safety concerns. And I'll go back to the fact that, once again, like Counselor Thurman said, we are to represent the eighty-seven hundred residents in the town of Bridgewater and the businesses, which no businesses would reap an economic benefit of an ATV that is going along the trail nowhere near a business. They're not coming downtown. So for those who are watching online, we are not talking about allowing them to come downtown. They would only be on that section of trail that takes them along behind the LCLC and out to Victoria Road. They're not stopping and shopping, filling up the gas, getting a burger. They're not spending any money in town. So all the costs are shouldered by the taxpayer of Bridgewater. And there's none of the benefits. So at this time, I think it's been clear from the residents that they do not want this opened up to off-highway vehicles. That is our job. The motion has been made and seconded. You ready for the question?
Questions.
Questions being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. There's no other visits coming before council. We do have an in-camera meeting next door. Motion to adjourn. Counselor Thurman, seconded by Counselor Frazier. We are adjourned.